Good evening. We'll call it to order this meeting of the Fairfield City Council. Please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ravelinski?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Before we begin, are there any additions to our agenda for tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll consider a consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes of the June 12th, 2017 council meeting, acceptance of the library board minutes, approval of the June 16th, 2017 payroll for $130,165.60, resolution consenting annual cigarette licenses, approval of the May finance report, approval of debt service payment in the amount of $74,892.50 for Sondheim Center, a resolution approving 17 to 18 salaries for city employees. Which one is it, 17 or 18?
Both. It's fiscal year 17, 18.
Oh, it's 2017 and 2018 salaries, okay. Not 17 employees, okay. Approval of liquor license for Torino's Pizza and Steakhouse, Casey's General Store, number 1714, Hideaway Pub, Elks Lodge, Best Western Fairfield, total claims of the amount of $351,550.11, and with one claim over $75,000, which was to Kristner Construction Incorporated for $101,568.30. So entertain a motion. Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen to approve the consent agenda. Please call the roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes, but I abstain from the June 12th minutes.
Okay. And Ravelinski?
Same with me. I vote yes, but abstain from the minutes from June 12th. Okay. Our next action item will be consideration to transfer hotel motel overage to the fireworks fund and obligated reserve. And since Ruston is not here, Mike, would you like to cover that?
Thank you, Councilmember Ravelinski. For the first time in the history of Fairfield, our gross receipts for the hotel motel tax have exceeded $175,000. We have an agreement with the Convention of Visitors Bureau that we are able to retain 20% of that overage. So our receipt totaled $191,420.11. The overage was $16,428. Our 20% is $3,285.60. And speaking with the mayor and Ruston Lippincott, they had recommended that this money be split between our fireworks receipts and then the other, or the remaining balance put in the obligated reserve to allocate toward wayfinding. So because this is the first time we've had this overage, we're bringing it to council for consideration on where we'd like to allocate these monies.
Question? Is the CVB director have input on where we put that 20%? Is that something the council then and the city would decide?
Thank you. That is simply a city decision. He can make a recommendation, but it's simply a city decision. It's up to this body and where those dollars go.
How much money is currently in the fireworks fund? And how much do we spend on fireworks every year, Russell?
We're currently a little behind in our receipts. We've got about $2,000. We'd like to see a minimum of $3,000 show. We hope to have a $5,000 show. That's sort of been the benchmark for years past.
Does this transfer would meet that goal?
That's correct.
I would move approval for that consideration to the transfer.
So moved by Thompson, second by Anderson to transfer the hotel motel overage to the fireworks fund and obligated reserve for this year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same sign.
No, I'm not opposing. I just want to make sure it's obligated reserve, not unobligated.
Did I say un? I'm sorry. Obligated reserve.
That's correct.
Thank you for the correction. Next item is setting a special council meeting. This would be for this Thursday, June 29th at 5:00 p.m. Mike, you want to explain a little bit with that spot?
Sure. So this is per the email you received from the mayor and/or Ruston Lippincott. The design charrette that was here in Fairfield soliciting input from both members of the council and members of the public, as well as other special interest groups in Fairfield, is ready to present their findings to this body as well as other stakeholders in the community. They are ready to present that on this Thursday at 5:00, and the mayor would like to call a special council meeting and invite this body and other members of the community to hear and learn about the findings of the wayfinding study.
So we will, do we need a resolution? I think we're just going to set it. We're just announcing we're setting that meeting for this Thursday at 5:00 p.m. Please attend and please watch. Next will be a consideration of a temporary and a permanent easement for the construction and maintenance of a northern entryway sign. Mike, are you involved with that?
Do we need, that was an action item. Do we need a vote on that?
On the?
Setting the?
Setting the council meeting?
The mayor can call a special council meeting, or two members of the council, or two members of this body can call a special meeting. So it's really a discretion or?
If you'd like to have a vote on it, do we have a motion in favor of the council meeting?
Sure. Second.
Okay. Moved by Anderson, second by Hallie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we're legal, Mike. Thank you.
So this is a project came out of a couple different programs. One was a visioning program for 2015. The other was the CVB had invited a group to come to town and look at our community from visitors' perspective, from people who don't live here. And both those groups, and then again in 2016, another group who came into town to help rebrand, all suggested a new north entryway sign to kind of bring the look of the south entryway sign and the east and west entryway sign into the final entryway to Fairfield. And the sign that's out there, it looks great, but it's kind of camouflaged. It blends into the surroundings a bit too much, and it's too small. This one would be native limestone with the same corteau lettering as the south entryway sign, and it would be much closer to the new pedestrian bridge that wasn't there at the time that other sign was installed. So this mock-up shows the area where it would be, and this resolution is to approve both a temporary one-year easement for construction of the sign and a permanent easement for maintenance of the sign. The other signs get maintained usually about once a year by our parks department, just come out and weed whack a little bit. But this is private property. This is owned by Cloud Wealth LLC. There's a building. You can't see it, but it's a bit to the northeast of where the sign is located, and they have agreed, the owners of that property have agreed, to allow this easement for this purpose. We would have gone closer to the trail bridge. I worked on this project with Steve Pedrick from French Rentecor. He was doing it just as a volunteer, as was I. But it's unclear who owns that property closer to the trail bridge, so we wanted to play it safe and work with the property owner where it's very clear. So of the loss funds that this project has received from the city, it's a little over 6,000. Only expense to date was for a survey that French Rentecor completed to officially create that area where the easement will be located. So it's all legal. Our city attorney wrote it up, and we got it signed by the property owner last week, who was visiting from China. So we were lucky to have that opportunity. So this is just approving the easement.
So this is south of the entrance on the west side of the road, and this property belongs to the buildings that are going to be north and west of this, not north and east.
So this belongs to the building that is on the same side of the road as this?
It'll be the west side.
Yeah. And there's a driveway somewhat north of this location.
Okay.
Yep. And the easement includes the driveway and then a rectangular piece of property that enables the city crew to enter their driveway, drive over to the sign, and do whatever needs to be done.
It's a permanent easement.
That's a permanent easement, yes.
Mike, is there going to be lighting on there like we have in other parts? So we're going to do like the solar panels and everything and light it that way?
I don't have lights. Not sure if solar would work, but if it would, that would be a nice option. But this isn't fully fleshed out in terms of, I mean, we have the budget, but those slight details, is it, do we pull the lighting from the electricity that's lighting the trail bridge, or do we do solar? Those are kind of things we can decide later. But this is a big first step, just to get the easement. It enables us to really start to move forward on this project.
So, I mean, this was donated. We don't have to pay for it.
Free easement.
And we just are approving it from our side here tonight.
And the owner looked at it as free beautification of their property.
Sure.
Indeed.
All right. Any other questions on this point? So we have a proposal here for this, approving this temporary and permanent easement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Hallie, second by Anderson to establish a temporary and permanent easement for the construction and maintenance of the northern entryway sign. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have a resolution considering, considering resolution to designate the low bidder on the public improvement project designated as wastewater treatment plan improvements, bid package number one, treatment facility improvements. Mike?
Thank you, Councilmember Ravelinski. Council, if you remember, we took action on May 8th to adjourn and postpone action on designating a low bidder for bid package one until June 26th. We're now here, we have yet to hear from USDA on continuation of their funding or an award of additional funding, and so we're simply keeping the chain alive, the chain of notification alive. So I would recommend that we do the same action and adjourn and postpone on this until July 24th at such time that we hope to have an answer from USDA. In a conference call with McClure last week, our city engineer Melanie Carlson and I have asked them to arrange a meeting with the state office in Des Moines so that we can get a more firm answer of when can we expect to hear funding? Because, you know, at such time that we think this may or may not happen, I think we need to take a hard look at the revenue bond market and/or proceeding with cash, just evaluate our alternatives here. So we're trying to get some additional answers out of the United States government, but that has proved to be challenging. So I'd recommend that we adjourn and postpone action on designating a low until July 24th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, I think we have a similar item here, Mike. A consideration resolution making award of construction contract for the project designated wastewater improvements, bid package number one, treatment facility improvements. What's the difference between the two? And I presume we're also delaying this one, right?
That's correct. So the first action, we're designating the low bidder. The second action, we're making the official award to that contractor. So very similar action, same recommendation.
adjourn and postpone.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, moving right along here. Next, is there a city attorney here? Yeah, John, if you want to come up. We're going to consider now the easement acquisition at 2081 Libertyville Road and also at 2075 Libertyville Road. John, why don't you lead us through that?
You have everything that has already been executed by the owners, and we talked about this in closed session, so you're looking at something you've already accepted in principle, except for the fact the resolution is here. Basically, you have Wilson Finney's permanent and temporary easement agreement, and you have Don Martin Jr. and his wife Joanne's permanent temporary easement agreements. And we need a resolution before we can record either of those easements or close with them on the amounts agreed, which were the amounts we approved in closed session. So I don't know if you have questions on this, but essentially, the documents signed by them, along with the resolution detailing it, and the easement map, and our letter of understandings, which are item 1 to 10, as far as things that apply to all of these easements, and also things that we're not requiring them to do, and they basically have opted not to do certain things. The specific, most difficult question for most of the owners along the road is whether they were going to hook in now to the sewer system with some incentives, or if they were going to continue to use their septic until sometime later as far as compliance issues arise. At this point, out of 22 easements, I believe we've obtained out of 26 that we need, we have 17 of those that aren't hooking up yet, and five that are hooking up and agreeable to a max. So that's what it looks like generally, but both of these are not hooking up at this point. We're paying them for their easement so we can move forward with the project and bid it.
Could you go over one by one what the details of the easement are then?
Sure. I will tell you also that at your July 10th meeting, as of this afternoon, it looks like we'll be bringing you another resolution. And my hope is we may be bringing you actually resolutions on three lots instead of one at that time. So these things are coming to pass, so to speak. Okay, the resolution concerning 2075 Libertyville Road. I'm going to have it reversed. You have 2081 also to begin with. Essentially, the resolution provides at page three, in the instance of Wilson Finney and Constance Finney, that we will be paying them $7,850 for the temporary and permanent easement. There's also a letter attached, which has paragraphs 1 to 10, that generally explains that we're going to rely on the easement sketches controlling. There'll be a connecting stub and a saddle Y attached to the main at their property as it passes through their property. That will be for the convenience in the future of them electing to connect, and for the convenience of an excavator, so they don't have to dig directly over the main. They will be at the edge of our easement to make their connection. There is an understanding that in the event the private owner would connect, the lateral would be their responsibility. There is an understanding on sewer connection rates, which basically is limited to right now. If they opt to do things now, we would be waiving some fees. Since they're not, probably that's not particularly applicable on either of these agreements. If, I think paragraph six is important paragraph, in the event they elect to connect, then our ordinances require that when they connect, they annex to the city. We've represented things about sewer depth, as far as it being adequate in the event they elect to service their basements. We've explained what the closing out costs are, if they would abandon their private septic system at sometime later, and also a loan program that has to do with that process. We're not requiring at paragraph nine, connection, at the time of acquiring this easement. It does not commit the private owner to annexation. Continued use of a compliant septic system is allowed. The easement construction comes with some certain expectations on the owner's part, which is general to all of our easements that we do. We will restore their surface, their yard, to a condition comparable prior to construction. If there's landscape, and there is landscape on these, and there's fence on Martin's, we will be agreeing. In the Wilson Finney situation, we're going to utilize a tree spade to move a couple of lesser trees that can be saved. We're not going to save a big tree, but other than that, the other situation with Mr. Martin, we're going to be replacing with new fence, that fence that we have to take out as he has a large pasture area that we're going to disrupt the fencing on. 2075, the same things apply to the Martins as far as our letter of understanding. They are going to be paid at page three of their resolution, $6,950 for their permanent temporary easement. It's, again, when I say walking through the same terms, with the exception that in their situation, there will be fence installation. There's very little difference in what these two owners are agreeing to. And essentially, they've already signed everything we need to record this as soon as we have your resolution approving this.
Thank you, John. Any questions? So we entertain a motion to approve the consideration of the easement acquisition at 2081 Libertyville Road?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ravelinski?
Yes. And next consideration, a resolution to consider the easement acquisition of 2075 Libertyville Road?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Hamilton. Call the roll again, please.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ravelinski?
Yes. Thank you, John.
Good night. Thank you.
Okay, finally here, we're here at the fireworks time here. Repeal and replace the ordinance 16.04.090 fireworks and explosives, and the ordinance number 09.40.020 throwing and hitting missiles. So this is the third and final reading that's up tonight on this ordinance that was considered twice before, and we should start with a public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to this ordinance, about this ordinance? Seeing none, we will take up our own discussion. Anybody have any input to offer here tonight?
A typo.
A typo?
Yeah. Page, let's see here, click page four. Under E, number one, from the hours of 9:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. the Friday, proceeding should be preceding. Just change the O to an E.
Change proceeding to preceding. Any other discussion bring up here? I have a point to bring up. I wasn't here on the discussion of the first two reads in this ordinance. I have received actually several calls from people. I know many of you have heard from people who are concerned about, you know, having too long of a time for people to do fireworks. I understand the point of view. I read certainly about articles in the paper about, you know, the discussion was here, and I understand the idea is to, you know, give people a little longer to be able to enjoy fireworks. Frankly, I don't, I'm not really comfortable the way it is right now because it's not clear. It's like every year you need to define it. I mean, it's not clear for a resident. It's clear to us, but for a resident, it's this kind of gray area. Oh, well, is it, is this okay now? And it's, you know, we can't go through this Sunday. Frankly, you know, I just got a call from someone this morning saying that people already are putting fireworks off outside his window, and he couldn't sleep all night because of it. It bothered him. I think there is that issue, and I would like to suggest, I would like to make an amendment if anybody is, if anybody could go for this. I'd like to restrict it down, really. I would like to say July 3rd and 4th. And then it's clear, you know, this year, what is legal? July 3rd and 4th, and December 31st. I like to do it three days a year, and I don't know if anybody's with me on this. You know, I know you guys, you all have considered this a lot, but I am sympathetic to people who are just bothered by these, you know, by those kind of noises, right, late at night, especially in the summer when your windows might be open and, you know, the different people have different, you know, preferences. And I understand, some people really have a preference to put off fireworks, maybe, you know, and they'd like to do it in their yard. I understand that point of view. But my amendment that I offer is change it to 3rd and 4th of July and December 31st only during the hours that were specified here. Anybody, any takers on that?
Steve, right now, what is the implication as somebody called and complained about fireworks being shot off?
An officer would be dispatched to investigate that. If it's against the ordinance that we have in place now, then they would be warned, more than likely.
Which right now, they shouldn't be shooting them off right now, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And if maybe that same person were to be first warned, and then second offense, and third, then they may receive a fine at some point?
Yes.
Okay. And what is the likelihood that from the time the person puts off the fireworks to the time the police arrive, we're actually going to identify that person as a culprit?
And that could be the problem. It's hard to locate, unless someone actually sees someone and points to them, says that person did that, then we could confront that person and give them the warning at that point.
Sure.
So, John, I may have gotten a call from the same individual.
Yeah.
What he told me was that it was 10:30, which is outside of the timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
So whether it was July 3rd or 4th, or the time that we have in here, that still would have been outside the ordinance. I told him that this is something we can try, and that no ordinance is set in stone, and if it's, causes a lot of trouble and we hear a lot of negative feedback, that it's something we can amend later. But I like the idea of the weekends, straddling the fourth, for families to light a few fireworks. That's what it was about.
That's fine.
So I'm willing to try it for a year as an experiment.
Any other discussion?
I would just, I mean, just to point out that if they're shooting them right now, when they're not supposed to be?
Right.
Even if we take it down to the 3rd and 4th, they're just more accessible now.
Right.
So it's going to be really hard. I mean, I wish I had faith that everybody's going to abide by what we put in ordinance, but living right now without ordinance on the books that nobody's abiding by, not nobody, but many people are not abiding by, at least we have an attempt at structure here.
Yes. Okay. Any other discussion? So then, do we have a?
I would move that we put it through third reading as is.
Second.
Oh, with the one correction.
With the?
Preceding.
Proceeding to preceding? Okay. Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ravelinski?
No. Okay. We are going to table the mayor's report, since he is not here, and, oh, wait, I'm sorry. We're coming up to the next one, which is a consideration of tobacco-free nicotine policy guidelines for use within city, within, yeah, parks, for use within city of Fairfield This proposal was considered by the Environmental and Franchise Utilities Committee on three or four different occasions. It was presented by Ken Daly with the Jefferson County Tobacco-Free Coalition. He is traveling, he couldn't be with us here today. I can give the little history of it. I think we did send out a little report in the minutes from our council meeting, some points to say about it. There was a general agreement that this, such a policy would be a positive thing. We were encouraged to do this as part of our Blue Zones project, our Healthy Cities project. I don't know that I need to read this whole thing, but the idea is that all tobacco and nicotine use, including electronic cigarettes, would not allowed in city parks. This would not be an ordinance. The idea of this is a resolution, and so it's not something that necessarily, you know, police could be called on, or people could be fined, but it is a statement of values that we have. These signs will be available and can be put up in the parks to inform people of the policy. I know that one of, a couple of things that we did as an evolution of this policy, first thing that we asked Ken to do is to present it to different community groups around town, get their feedback, get their support if there was, and he did talk to many people. He's not here tonight to give a report on that, but he, he did give his report a while back, and said that, talked to most community groups, and he did get very positive feedback on that. At the meeting before this last one, we had suggested now that we talk to the Park and Rec Board, or what, and Calvin's here, so Calvin, you want to come up and give a little report on how everybody felt about that?
Yeah, like you said, Ken, he's also on the Parks and Recreation Board, too, so him and I, we've talked about this multiple times. He brought it to the board's attention just last month, and our board unanimously agreed to that it would be a great thing for us to have in the parks, mostly just because we have quite a bit of events that go on out there, and, you know, even stuff like the ribbon cutting ceremony coming up here this week with the adult playground equipment, the exercise equipment, stuff like that. We don't have anything out there that would say, you can't smoke here, somebody could, or you can't vape, or whatever, somebody could easily just come and light a cigarette, or, you know, think of our Easter egg hunt, or Halloween events, or anything like that, too. My, you know, my whole viewpoint on it as well is that it's going to clean the park up. You know, you get people when we have our, I'm not saying everybody does it, not everybody does it at all, but I'm just saying that when we have shelter rentals, you know, people come in, they, you know, they're hanging out, you might have some people who are smoking, flicking cigarette buds and stuff like that, too, so. And that, you know, that can be very time-consuming on our staff when we go around and make sure our shelters, you know, do the best we can to make sure they're, you know, as clean as possible for the next rental, and having to pick up cigarette buds laying around there, so. I do think it's going to be something kind of like with the fireworks, that it's going to be, at times, it's going to be hard to enforce, you know, we're not in the parks all the time, you know, people come in on the evenings, late at night, or in the weekends and stuff like that, but I do think that with the signage up, it might allow other parkgoers to say, hey, you know, can't be smoking in here, can't be doing this, so. That's kind of the Parks and Rec standpoint on it.
Thanks, Calvin.
Yep.
Any discussion here from the council?
Again, though, this isn't something that's enforceable by a citation.
No.
Or anything like that. It's just asking somebody, and if they don't want to do it, they can choose not to.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, that leads to my question, under the enforcement section, where it says in letter E, if a violator refuses to leave, the staff may contact local authorities. Who's the authority if not the police? And if it's not an ordinance, the police can't act on it. Mike, or Sean Morrissey, can someone clarify to me the legality of such a policy?
Well, they should contact the local city council person.
Exactly, is that what it is? When I'm gassing out?
Or the tobacco free prevention coordinator, for the county tobacco prevention coordinator. It's good enough, but I-
If somebody were to call, please, what would, how would it work, Mike?
Councilmember, if I may.
Please.
To reiterate the words of Chief Thomas, he said that it is within the police's power to ask them to leave the park if they're in violation of a policy. Now, they wouldn't be cited for an infraction, but they would be asked to leave the premises.
Interesting. So if they refuse to leave for smoking a cigarette, they're arrested?
The police would escort them off the property.
Okay, that sounds like some enforcement to me, and how do we, how do we withstand that if somebody says, you know, this is just a policy, and, and you can't really do this to me, and all that? Because it's just a resolution, it's not-
Our police always have the ability to enforce our park rules and regulations. This is like a rule or regulation.
Right.
And when you have a policy that's the policy of all of you, that people are supposed to respect, all the police are doing is carrying out your wish. If somebody refuses to abide by a rule or regulation, they are basically rejecting the privilege of being in that city park that we've created for them. They may not see it that way, but that's, at that point, it is an enforcement issue, because if they're going to argue with law enforcement when they're being politely asked to comply, then they should leave.
So then they'd be cited for a trespass?
Well, they could be cited for interference with a lawful police act, as far as that goes at that point, couldn't they, Rusty?
It'd be interference with official acts, yes.
Yeah.
That's possible.
That's where I'd start, yeah.
You'd have to discuss with the county attorney as well, because that's a state charge.
Now, if this person, say, was smoking a cigarette and put the cigarette out, they would be then allowed to stay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just here.
Okay.
Was it not littering?
Then it's a, then it's a park policy.
Okay.
All right. This is kind of like having all the dogs on leashes, right?
Yeah.
That's exactly-
Works the same way. Until they run up and bite you while it's all right.
The advantage here is that when the event's occurring, and you have an emcee on the stage talking to the crowd, you can say, it's a policy not to smoke in city parks, so if you are, please extinguish your cigarettes. They can say that with authority at an event. So you're creating a culture where people are aware of this, people mostly will comply and so will, but I think it starts over.
That, that would work in smaller parks, but with a park the size of Chautauqua, if you're shelter two and somebody's at shelter one.
Well.
You know.
I'm not trying to make this complicated, but it just sounds to me like, you know,
someone that's very sensitive to it can take it to the full extent, or somebody that's just trying to be nice and say, please don't do this, there's, there's a world of difference between those two people. And the person that wants to take it to the full extent could immediately get on the phone to 911 and say, come to the park, this guy's smoking, you know?
Yeah, I have a feeling that's not going to happen, but I could, I suppose. You know, I think there is history here with the state, the state law, the Smoke Free Air, Iowa Smoke Free Air Act, or whatever, that, that was passed back several years ago, and I think there's, because there are a lot of restrictions with that act, you know, this is just kind of increasing those kind of things, you know, extending it a little further to, to the area that smokers thought that they had safe to themselves. They're outside, they should, you know. But, you know, what, what I, my understanding, what has been found generally with the Smoke Free Air Act, is that very little has been done in terms of enforcement, that it, it becomes a cultural thing, becomes, you know, we're, we're saying as a society, this behavior is not approved in this place, and generally, that, it's a self-enforcing thing, and like you say, smoking a cigarette takes five minutes, seven minutes, that act is generally over. I mean, if a person wants to be openly defiant, then, you know, and, and someone opposite them wants to be openly aggressive about, you know, enforcing a policy, then you might have an interaction, but almost hardly any of that has happened with Smoke Free Air Act. And that's my understanding from the Department of Public Health, that was what I had, because I was still involved for a couple of years when that act was there. So I, it's not really an issue. I think the main idea with this is that it sort of pushes the dial, it's, it, what it does is it makes a statement to, to the whole population, especially the young people, that this is behavior that we don't really like to have around us, and it, and it hopefully is going to make less, you know, ultimately be, you know, make that, help people make that decision not to use tobacco on their own lives. And that's, that's basically what, where there's coming from on the, from the public health standpoint. That's why they're giving us, they're spending money on these signs to, to, you know, sponsor these kind of things. Any other points on this? If, otherwise, I would undertake a motion to approve the, the resolution to, for the-
So moved.
Tobacco-free nicotine policy guidelines.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Rasmussen, second by Flornoy. Please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revalinsky?
Yes. Okay. Now, next then is the mayor's report, which we're tabling, and we will move down to the committee reports. So that, again, the only committee that met during this time was our Environmental and Franchise Utilities Committee. So we considered the tobacco issue from, from the environmental standpoint, and the Franchise Utilities Committee met with Waste Management. I did give a report on this, but I'll, I'll, in, in writing, but I'll just kind of review it here for everybody. We met with a representative of Waste Management who proposed to us that when we renew the contract, which is up this fall, that we go with the bins, you know, the bins that they will supply for trash removal. Right now, they have supplied us with bins, large bins, ninety-six gallon bins for recycling waste, but these new bins for the trash removal will, will replace what people are using on their own, whether it's, you know, just putting in bags, or their own garbage cans. Currently, residents are allowed to put two thirty-pound, I'm sorry, two thirty-gallon containers out every week per household, per billing unit, along with the, every other week, collection of the recycling. So the proposal from Waste Management was to give a person their choice, either a ninety-six gallon or a sixty-four gallon bin that could be filled up every week. So you'd get at least four more gallons than you get now, or, you know, whatever, thirty-six gallons more. So it would be another one-third or more of garbage that you would be able to get rid of. They do want to raise our rates, and they want to also charge a monthly fee of a dollar fifty for, for the rental of these new bins, so the, the rates will go up. We haven't, you know, we're trying to negotiate with them to make sure that the rate is as low as, as we can get it to be, and so we will give a proposal, we'll present, well, they may present their proposal, council at the time anyway, when it, when it's time to renew the contract. It's just a progress report.
You buy two trash cans for twenty bucks down at Walmart, why should I pay eighteen dollars a year to rent?
Yeah.
A trash can.
Correct. Yeah. And, and it's, and, and the reason from their side, yeah, well, the reason from their side, of course, is that they can do it, they can automate the, the dumping of the trash, so maybe they should just give us the thing, because they're saving money on, on trash removal, so that's good input, we'll negotiate with them on that.
It just offends me that, that they would do that.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for the input. Our committee will take note and relay that at our next meeting with Waste Management. All right. Melanie, we're down to the project update here. Would you like to give us a little rendition here?
All right, so some of last year's projects are finally wrapping up. The first page of the project update is fairly light, so I'll touch base on the second page, and specifically, I'll go through the, the map of the work that will be going on here yet this summer and into the fall. So on the map, item number one is the Lincoln Avenue Sanitary Sewer Extension. On that project, the city received quotes for installation of a manhole. Dribe construction was the low bid on that manhole for fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. We have not yet awarded this. I believe when the development agreement for this area comes through, the sewer will be discussed at the same time, but that work will be, will happen in conjunction with, with the development out there. And of course, number two, we've got the wastewater equalization basins, which have already been awarded to Carly Nelson, and then hopefully soon, we have information from USDA on the wastewater treatment plant. Then item number three is the Walton Lake spillway that we've talked about, that should begin drawdown here in a couple, excuse me, drawdown in a couple weeks, and then the actual repair is happening in August, September, and October. Then, a project that the council has not seen in front of them, other than the engineering agreement, what is for sanitary sewer replacement on Adams, west of Maple, and then also in conjunction with that, some reconstruction on Adams. Around the, sometime next week, I'll be sending out letters to those property owners, letting them know about the construction and the timeframe of, of that work. Five sanitary sewer point repairs near Little Thon, this is still in development, and again, as we get closer, we'll be notifying the exact property owners of that work. Both number four and number five, the sanitary sewer is very deep in these areas, so, which is why the city crews will not be doing them in-house, but rather bid them out, because I believe they're in the fifteen-foot depth range, which is well deeper than what the se, city can safely do with their equipment. Number six is Libertyville Road, and as we proceed with easements, eventually that, that schedule will get firmed up in order to do that sanitary sewer extension. Number seven is, again, something that has not been in front of the council, but was in the street's budget, to do reconstruction of the alleys on the block just west of here, so it would be the east-west alley, straight out here from City Hall, and then half of the north-south block there between ERA, Real Estate, and Indian Cafe, so that one, that's an exciting one that the street crews are going to be doing in-house, and we'll clean up that, clean up that area, and in conjunction with the facade project, finish things nicely right there. And then finally on the map, number eight is street patching. I believe the street crews are out there right now, west of Seventh on Harrison and Fillmore. The, the street crews are doing lots of patching this year, this is probably just the most significant one. They're, they're all over town doing patching, half, half width at a time, too many to name, actually, on this, as well as some of the sewer work that's being done, but these are the major projects that the departments have on schedule for this summer. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks for the report, Melanie. Calvin, while you're here, would you please give us a report on what's going on for Fourth of July?
Well, we had a meeting here with our staff, it was Mr. Darrell Biscar, Chief Thomas, and Scott Vaughn, and City Administrator Mike Harmon, and it's going to be my first year of part of the Fourth of July, my first day, I started last summer, it was July fifth, so I'm pretty excited about it, but we are, we sent letters out to all of the residents that live on, I'll give you the name of the street again, Michael, it was-
Royal Oaks.
Royal Oaks, took letters down to all of them, let them know that come seven o'clock in the evening, traffic coming in and out will, they won't be able to come in and out starting from seven o'clock until after the show starts. Myself, along with Pam, Kraft, Ed Wood, and a couple other of our Parks Department people are going to help with the parking, and then the Police Department will obviously be helping with traffic control. Darrell's got some volunteers to help with some traffic control as well, and Scott Vaughn. We have, right now, I'm working on trying to get a couple more food vendors out there for the event. We've got popcorn guy out there right now, and then we have a maybe, potentially, on another food truck, kind of like carnival-type food, that'll be out there. I was in contact with the radio station, they might potentially be able to come out there and play some music, do like a live broadcast out there, and, and also, we got, went to the first art walk, they got a bunch of the big yard games and stuff like that, Giant Jenga, corn hole, you know, different games like that, we'll have those set up there as well, so.
Sounds like a good event, Calvin. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, I think we finished our agenda, take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
By Hamilton, and second by Flornoy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.